Hello and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, May 6, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and justiciable.
Thank you. Big crowd tonight. Good thing it's not ratings week.
It is. It is the week before town meeting is ratings.
Well, our numbers are down. Open forum, eh, anybody? Seeing no one here for open forum, I will close open forum and go right to our public hearings, Mr. Vice Chair. My apologies, but you have to read these.
This is the first time in my eighty-year career I've had to read this. Under the provisions of Chapter 166 of the General Laws, in any additions thereto or amendments thereof, the Select Board will hold a public hearing on May 6, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the East Bridgewater Town Hall, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, Mass. On the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining in protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Highland Street, install one Joe pole on Highland Street, beginning at point approximately 450 feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Highland Street and North Bedford Street. Install new pole, P-27-50, at approximately 47 degrees, three feet, 5.4 inches north, 70 degrees, 57 feet, 17.9 inches west.
Thank you, sir. All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone here to speak on hearing? Hello?
I'll talk to you later.
Okay.
It's fine.
Did I mess up?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, tell me before I mess up the next one.
You're not gonna mess it up.
Okay.
Hi, how you guys doing?
You could just state your name for the record, please.
Jared Aker, representing National Grid.
Okay.
This Highland Street pole that we're asking for is gonna be to add in our closer, which is basically part of our fluser scheme. It's a device that's gonna improve the reliability and safety of the electrical system in the town.
Okay. Questions?
None.
Charlie, questions? All right, and there's no one here to speak either way.
Just glad the German national grid is here. I appreciate you taking the time. I know inevitably if you weren't here, we'd have five people here.
Exactly, asking questions. But with no one here, Noah Butters, I will close the public hearing.
Yep.
And then we vote.
Yeah, I'll vote. I'll make a motion to approve the request from Massachusetts Electric, doing business as National Grid, as stated.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have to wait until 6:15 to do the next one?
Because we posted it specifically, there are hearing notices and everything.
We have to wait in case somebody comes.
You can stay right there and put your feet up.
Whatever you want to do. Feet up on the other chair. And then we have appointments at 6:30. Shall we do action items for 10 minutes? Let's move through them.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 8, 2024 Select Board meeting.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve but not release the minutes of the April 8, 2024 Select Board Executive Session Meeting.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I make a motion to vote to approve the minutes of the April 22, 2024 Select Board meeting.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I make a motion to vote to approve the minutes of the April 30, 2024 Select Board meeting.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I make a motion for discussion and possible vote to approve property liability workers' comp and CHEB coverage through MYFY25.
Second, Charlie?
Yeah, we did get a 6% increase, which was about what I expected, given the insurance markets right now. But I'm certainly still recommending, the rates are good, but also they have a vast array of training programs for supervisors, for line people, all sorts of topics. We just don't get that type of resource available if we were using other vendors. And so I'm strongly recommending that the board approve this.
Okay. Questions?
Nothing good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the request of Sally Feeney for the use of Town Common in the Town Packing Lot for a community yoga for full moons in select evenings. These four events will take place at the Town Common from 5:30 to 7:30 PM on June 21st, July 21st, August 19th, and September 17th.
Second, and my apologies because Sally Feeney had actually messaged me about this a while ago, and I don't think I ever got back to her because it was in one of those folders that I didn't see again. So I'm glad that it's come forward and we can approve it. It won't be dark. Will the moon be out at 5:30 at night?
Not at 5:30. I would say the only time that might be is September 1. I mean, the moon might be up.
Right.
A little bit just over the horizon.
Yeah, but the energy of the full moons will be
It's still there.
In full force.
Yeah.
All in favor? He just roll his eyes at me.
Yeah.
He's rolling his eyes at the world, that's what he's doing.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve signage request from Lauren Tavares Mulhearn for the Community Coalition for Change, Inc., to put lawn signs on municipal property May 9, 2024 through June 9, 2024, to advertise the Fourth Annual Celebration of Multiculturalism.
Second, discussion? I can't believe this is the fourth year.
I hope, I hope we don't have the same problem as we did last year when they were supposed to be a horrible day.
Oh, they had to move it inside.
They were doing everything indoors, and it was a beautiful day out there.
Yep, I was away last year. This year I will be able to attend.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, a motion to discuss in approval of a contract with Leftfield for owner's project manager services for the central elementary school project.
Second, Charlie?
We have that.
So this carries over a little bit from, because I'm also, I'll skip the central school update under my report. We'll talk about what's been going on. So early in April, the town had, through its building committee, had issued what's called a request for services for firms that provide owner project manager services. The OPM is not the architect or the construction company. The OPM does the coordination, much of the paperwork for this project, can do PR, website work, a number of facets on the administrative side. And make sure that, for instance, we're complying with all the bidding laws. We're working within the Massachusetts School Building Authority's regulations, requirements, and stipulations so that we're doing everything properly. We got 10 firms who had submitted proposals. We had had a walk-through over the central school. We probably had representatives from 12 or 15 firms there. We had probably about 30 firms that actually asked for the RFS, but we got 10 in. The subcommittee, the selection committee of the building committee, met like the 19th, I think, of April, if I remember right. Met for a couple of hours. We whittled down the 10 firms down to five and set up another session of the selection committee, selection committee on April 25, Thursday, over at the junior and senior high school library to interview all five firms. And we did that. There's a member right there. There's the chair right there.
We're talking about Leftfield. Not that you're out in it.
You know where you've been for years?
And, you know, certainly all five firms were quite qualified. They could do the job. But I think through the interview process, we learned a lot more from Leftfield about what their capabilities were, what their past experience are, the team approach that they have, but also the individuals that they were going to present as part of their team and the experience that they each individually had in their subject fields. And we felt good about them, and they were the best firm out of the five that we could choose that afternoon. We made a recommendation to the full building committee. The building committee met on 30th? Yes, 30th last week.
Second.
Was it the second? No, because...
May 2nd, wasn't it? Oh, no, you're right. Sorry, never mind.
And the committee, the full committee approved the award. What the board needs to do now is not sign this. I know it sounds weird, but we go over the MSBA stipulations. They're very specific. They said have the Select Board approve this, approve the award, but don't have the board sign it. Until the MSBA has approved everything, which we were hoping to do next month, the town should not be signing anything. So I'm asking the board, in fact, to approve this tonight, but not take any other action.
Yep, I'm on that committee, as you know. And I was, I think, good to hear like that everybody really agreed that this was the best firm of everybody, that whole selection committee, and said that they actually felt like they had local ties that would be significant and important in going forward with this because they'll be with us for quite some time, so. Any questions or comments?
No, I've already talked to Charlie about this and I've read everything, yeah.
Okay.
Talked to a couple of the committee members, so.
And they'll take over a lot of the things that right now, you know, everybody's kind of like, can we do this? Should we do that? And they'll be a good guiding, you know, light for all of that. And also the communication with the town so that it's consistent, which I think is important.
We were laughing. We needed an OPM to hire the OPM.
Right, kind of, kind of. But Mr. Haynes had lots of experience prior working on the high schools, so that was a good, good help with that, so.
That's why you picked out Leftfield.
I gotta admit, I love the name, Leftfield. I just think it's just great. All right, all in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the line item transfer request of the town clerk as printed.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I'd like to pass over a item turn until we have a full board.
Okay, that's fine with me. Not an issue. Okay.
That is the end of our action items, Madam Chair, and we have about two minutes.
Two minutes. Charlie, do you want to do anything quick?
Well, simply, we are having the annual town meeting over at the school, junior, senior high school, at 7:00 PM. The town meeting warrant is up on the website. If people want a copy from that, they can also come through the Select Board office. We have copies available for anybody who wants a paper copy. The, as the usual, articles will be there. We'll have the annual special town meetings. We'll have the annual town budget. We'll have payments for union contracts if necessary. We'll have a selection of zoning bylaws, I expect, from the planning board as part of the annual town meeting warrant. We haven't done that for a couple of years. Anybody who's a registered voter is welcome to participate. There is a section for those who are non-residents or who aren't registered to vote here in East Bridgewater. There's, you know, they're free to attend the meeting also. And my hope is, obviously, we're gonna get done in one night. We've been able to do that the last few years. But we welcome everybody at 7 o'clock sharp to start the meeting.
Okay.
Next Monday.
May 13th, town meeting.
And town election is Saturday. People can still, I believe, vote by mail. They can request their mail ballot. Make sure to check the town clerk's office, whether they can also, the process for voting absentee. But annual town election will be, again, held over at the junior, senior high school on, sorry, May 18th, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Very good.
If I could just add something to that. You know, people say it's a local election. My vote's not gonna matter. Over in Bridgewater, they're involved, I believe, in a recon for town clerk. And down in Norton, they had a school committee election where three people were running for two positions. The top person received 11 more votes than the other two tied. So your vote, your vote really, really counts. And please come out that day and give the community support.
Yep. Yeah, I would argue that vote in a local election is probably the most important voting you do. It directly impacts how your town is governed.
Right.
And it can come down to just a handful of votes. And I know that, you know, there's only one contested race on the ballot, but it's an important one. And yeah, I hope people will come out and give the election workers some work to do that day. All right, it is 6:15, so we will do our second poll hearing.
6:15. Under the provisions of Chapter 166 of the General Laws and any additions thereto, our amendments thereof, the Select Board will hold a public hearing on May 6, 2024, at 6:15 PM in the East Bridgewater Town Hall, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, Mass. On the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Pond Street, install one Joe pole, 272 Pond Street, beginning at a point approximately 140 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Lock Robin Lane. National Grid to install new subpole, 59-84, in order to remove tree guy that is going to live, that is going into, that is to be removed.
Is a guy living in a tree?
We have a guy living there, and we have to remove the tree, so he's gonna be homeless.
We're gonna need some explanation on this one, sir.
It's a Keebler elf.
All right. I wanna make shoes.
Yeah, so, so the guy wires are just the steel supporting wires for the structural. They can go down, or they can go horizontally pole-to-pole. So right now, there's just one in the tree. So this stub pole across the street is gonna be pracing the pole line that's curving to prevent it from, from falling over, and it's just getting that wire out of the tree.
Okay.
So it's, so it's basically replacing the support that that tree is providing with a pole in an anchor.
Okay. Very good. And is there anyone here on the poll hearing other than a representative from National Grid? No? Seeing no one, I will close the hearing and take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Massachusetts Electric Company's doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England for installation of whatever on Pond Street.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Thank you very much.
Very much. Have a good night.
Appreciate it. All right, our next appointment isn't until 6:30, so Charlie, you...
Included on the special, on the town election warrant on May 18th, we do have a ballot question concerning, concerning civil service in the police department. Back, I believe, as in 1969, the town had voted to have its patrol officers, both part-time and full-time, along with its sergeants, be part of civil service. And that, the civil, there's a civil service system here in Massachusetts, and localities can choose to have their various positions, usually at the police and/or fire, most likely as part of the civil service system. Under that regimen, the state has exams periodically. I think it's like every couple of years. Anybody can, you know, take the test. They take the test. They get on a list of the communities they're interested in working in. Eventually, if we have vacancies here, then we ask for the list, and the police department works down the list to find a qualified applicant. In general, we have to pick the person at the top of the list because of the scores. There can be reasons for picking someone below the top person, but everything else basically has to follow up on the score. The score is everything. It's become more and more difficult getting candidates from civil service. As mentioned, it's every couple of years, but fewer and fewer people are applying through the civil service system for police positions, and we're not seeing the numbers that we would like. It's also, if we need someone, and there aren't enough people even on the list to qualify, then we have to wait for the next exam, for instance. What Town Meeting did last year, year ago, I think, was...
Was it last year or the year before?
Maybe it was two years ago. The Town Meeting had voted to withdraw from civil service for these positions. We were under the impression that we would need to go through the state legislature. And that bill has been placed on hold by the state legislature. During that time, there's been no action really taking on it, taking on it. We've had hearings where we've had representatives from the town testify in favor of the bill. There were probably another 20 communities that were also waiting up there for whatever reasons. The state legislature has decided not to take any action on those bills. Working with town council, we went back and looked at the state laws on the subject and found that if the town, since we voted any special town, not special town election, but a town election, to have those positions become part of the civil service system, we could withdraw from the civil service system on the same basis. If the town election voters, not Town Meeting, but Town Election voters, would vote to have that withdrawal done, then we would be out of civil service. The police department could hold its own exams. Those who are applying have to pay for them, so there's no cost to the town. So we don't have that burden. I know there was a concern, for instance, about nepotism, which I understand. I mean, I've seen situations in other communities, not here in East Bridgewater, where you may have hundreds of people apply for a position, and for whatever reason, the police chief or the fire chief or was ever making the appointment chooses, you know, number 121 because they know somebody. However, there are nepotism laws in the state. They apply under civil service. They apply under towns that don't have civil service. And if someone had a complaint concerning the appointment of a police officer, if we decide to withdraw from civil service, they would file that complaint with the State Ethics Commission. I think the board and the police chief would be very well aware of the nepotism laws and would avoid for that to happen in the first place. We, I think, the police chief held an exam a couple of weeks ago, an initial one. I think it was between 50 and 70 applicants signed up for the test and took the test. So we will have a very, very good pool of candidates to select from when we have our next vacancies, assuming we can get out of civil service. And it also gives us, not just right now if we have vacancies, but we'll have that list available to us in times to come when we have vacancies in the course in future years. So my hope is that the townspeople, when they come out to vote on Saturday, May 18th, will vote yes to withdraw from civil service. A yes vote means the town is withdrawing. A no vote means that we're staying put with civil service. It's become a very awkward and antiquated system to work with, and it's time for the town to move on to a more modern system. I will say that the current members of the department, the current sergeants, the current patrol officers, still will retain their civil service protections. They will not lose that. All this was negotiated with the unions during the last contracts. Both sides agreed to have the town withdraw. The police department has, through its police chief and members of the department, written up hiring practices, written up promotion practices, and written up disciplinary practices so that everything would be in place if we did withdraw. And all this was agreed to by both the union representing the patrol officers and the union representing the sergeants. So all the parties who have a major interest in this have agreed to withdraw. It's now just up to the voters of the town to do so.
Okay, thank you. And if people have questions, they...
They can certainly call the, the Select Board office or the police chief.
Great. I've had people ask me, and I don't feel as qualified to explain it as well. And so that has been my suggestion, is to say, call Chief Jenkins. He'd be happy to talk to you and explain the situation, so.
And it's very important to get this message out because if I'm correct, we had sent out approximately 1,400 mail-in requests last week for this upcoming election, but there hasn't been a lot of conversation prior to this. So people are confused. Hopefully, they, they, a lot of them have been calling the police and asking for that. But the important thing is, you know, the chief, the deputy chief, the superior officers, the tourism association, they have all agreed unanimously that this is what we should be doing. This is our next move to bring it into, Charlie said, you know, a current, current situation. So again, the important thing is, it's a yes vote. And hopefully, anyone that has questions that day, I believe, someone from the police department will be there to answer questions on election day.
Good. Good. Okay, thank you.
You know, I did post the same explanation up on the town's Facebook page and also on the website so that, you know, someone, they can go there also.
They can point people that way, too. Very good. Okay. What else?
We talked civil service. We talked central school, obviously, already. Just a little bit of follow-up. You know, what we'll be doing with the project manager firm is going to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the first week of June for a meeting with them. There's a sort of, they have their own selection panel there as part of the MSBA. We'll meet with them. We have to submit a whole pile of information. I know Ginny Williams from the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, who's the chair of the building committee, is hard at work gathering that information together. We'll present that. I'm sure that the members of the screening committee up there are familiar with Leftfield. They've worked on other projects and everything. But they need, we need to go through an approval process with them. Assuming that happens, then we'll spend the summer doing another request for services. We'll work with, obviously, the, on a project manager to do that, but one for the architect and designer. So that, I'm hoping by the end of the summer, we'll have both the OPM and the architect on board, and we'll actually get into the meat of the feasibility study and schematic design work.
Good. And I, yeah, and I think one thing that's important for people to understand, and it's taught me if I get any of this wrong, but a lot of the time, timing of this, it feels like it's very drawn out because we had to, you know, we sort of rushed to get it passed at town meeting so that we could get in on the MSBA's original deadline. But then, once we're approved through them and we get put into what this, sort of like this pipeline of theirs, they control the timeframe because they don't want to have too many towns all building schools. And they're still behind in trying to catch up from COVID when nothing was happening. So it's not, you know, like when we think about like the junior, senior high school and how quickly that went. This isn't gonna work that way because of the, just way the whole, the whole project has changed throughout the state of how things are being handled now. So, you know, people, this is, this is a marathon, folks. Maybe, maybe two marathons. I don't know.
I mean, townspeople should not expect us to be coming back to them for an additional vote until at least the fall, more likely the winter of 2025, '26.
Right.
Maybe even the spring of '26, depending on timing. It will, it, you know, if you wanted, if you want to do the feasibility study and schematic design work correctly and meet the SMBA's regulations and stipulations, it does take a fair amount of time to do.
Yep. Okay. Anything else?
I don't think I have anything else.
Lee, announcements from you? Nothing? David, how about some soft shoe?
Not wrong shoes.
Oh, speaking of the election, I believe, yeah, yeah, we have the candidate's night, I believe.
Yes, this Thursday night, in this room, I think. It's Thursday. Wednesday night is Citizen of the Year, the Rotary event. Thursday night is candidate's night, right here in this very room. Do I get my usual seat?
I'm not writing that. You get to sit with the Hoipoy.
And I do believe that someone from the police department will be there to answer questions about
To talk about.
The civil service.
The civil service question. Good.
Sense around the ballot.
Good. All right. Now, are we going to close?
So I would...
We're gonna adjourn?
Adjourn your meeting with...
And open a new meeting as water commissioners?
Right. Or if we're done on our section here as wearing your Select Board hats, we're not planning on going to executive session. I think we worked that out. So I would, you're gonna adjourn this meeting and then reconvene to be the Board of Water Commissioners.
Okay. Get your hat out.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adjourn out of the Select Board meeting for May 6.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. 6:29. Is that close enough?
Yeah, and then now reopen?
No.
Take a motion to open.
Motion to open the Board of Water Commissioners meeting at 6:30.
Great.
We have three discussions this evening.
All right. Discussion and vote on water bill adjustment request, 430 Highland Street. Hi. You guys are here to provide background information. I don't know, Jason, do you want to come up? You can have a seat at the table. Jason, do you want to come up as well? Thank you. If you could just give us your name for the record.
My name is Michael York. I live at 430 Highland Street.
Okay. Okay. Yep, go ahead.
So in the last quarter that we got for our, our water bill, I just noticed that it was unusually high. Generally, our bills are around $400, give or take, a little bit. This last one we got, it was like $950, 958, so it was like doubled, which prompted me to call. And yeah, 983-65 is the current one, which does have a demand on it, just because I was, I guess, delaying until tonight. So I called, they checked the, the water meeting and did a water consumption test. And they determined that there was a leak pretty much the whole month of December that I wasn't aware of. The only thing that I can think of is at one point, my wife mentioned that we had a leaky toilet in our downstairs. So I replaced the materials and all that and didn't think anything of it. And then we got the water bill. So I can only assume that it was leaking for some time and we were just unaware of it. If it was small enough to not hear it, or if we weren't hearing like the toilet, you know, refill itself. So, I don't know, I've, I've been living in East Bridgewater now for about nine years, and our bill has been about consistent the whole time. So I guess, I don't know if it's possible, but I would be hoping to ask for some type of either forgiveness or a credit to account for that. Like, we weren't being negligent, you know, we weren't, it was the winter. We're not, we don't have a pool or anything, so I am the only income in my family. You know, we volunteer at the school, at field trips, things like that. So we're pretty active, volunteer for T-ball and softball. So I guess that is where I'm at now, is just, I guess, to request that.
Yep, understandable. Jason, anything to add?
Yeah, it, what he said was correct. His bill did jump, and most likely it was some sort of a leak, a leaking toilet. That's probably 99% of it, because a lot of people don't hear it. It runs, it runs, it runs, and they don't see it. So it's not in the yard, it's not coming up out of the yard, it's not dripping hose, it's not spraying all over the place. So we did do a consumption report, and it did show it was leaking. Something must have been fixed, and then it stopped.
What period of time, Jason, was, did you determine there was a leak?
Let's see. We did a water consumption report for 90 days, and it was, we can only go back 90 days once we get called in to go out there and do it. It only, will only capture 90 days. So we did it from December of, December 3rd of 23, and we captured all the way till March, March 8th of 24. And then we can, we can see a continuous, some sort of a leak, and then all of a sudden, boom, it just, it will stop.
Okay. But you feel like it's, it's under control now?
Yeah, I, I mean, I've got the report here, there's nothing.
Okay.
We checked everything else, and it's just, it is what it is.
Yep, okay.
So a lot of the times we work, we work with the residents, customers, and, and they'll have us come out and say, I want to know if we fixed the leak. Is, is the leak fixed where, you know? And we can actually run a report on the meter and see what's, what's transpiring.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right. David, anything?
The last, is it the latest bill? Is that the first one that actually jumped?
Yeah, it's the only one we've ever had jump like that at all. It was the bill date, bill date of February 27th, 2024.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is, this graph here is a good representation, I think, of what happened.
Yes.
What it's showing there is, obviously, you had a very high consumption during the first part of December. When you, once you confirmed between the water department yourself that a leak had occurred, you must have done, obviously, you mentioned getting it fixed because it goes back down to relatively normal levels within a day or two of the 18th.
Yeah. Yeah, and it, it stinks, and I'm sorry that that happened. Generally, what we do in these circumstances is we try to have you work with the water department to have more time to pay the bill without accruing additional penalties.
That would be the treasurer.
Okay.
The treasurer.
Okay, sorry, I misspoke on that. But we would have you work with them to try to work out a payment plan so that you can get caught up.
Okay.
Generally, we can't forgive, you know, unfortunately, I wish we could. I wish we had the money to say, yeah, you know, it's not your fault, and we feel bad. And, but unfortunately, we just don't have the ability to really do that and, and put then that burden on, you know, everybody, all the other, you know, consumers of water.
Yeah, I understand, I get it.
And they will work something. You have until a certain period of time to, to pay that bill, and you can do monthly payments.
Yeah.
To bring that up, doing it that way. So it's not one lump sum that has to be paid.
But they can stop like the demand and the interest and stuff, so that that'll start accumulating and-
Would we be, because I didn't know the, I didn't know the process for this, so, you know, they had mentioned that there was a meeting that we could come to.
Yep.
Would it be possible to have at least the demand and the interest removed? To just pay the original bill?
Well, I think that we're going, we're going through this appeals process. I would think you should be able to, I mean, the real issue is not the non-payment. He's disputing the payment, and I think, you know.
Yeah.
Talk with the treasurer about that. We'll let her know what we decided tonight and-
Charlie will talk with her and let her know that they can, they can take that off, so that-
I mean-
And that way, it will continue to accumulate because I know that interest is on there.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know if I was supposed to pay it and then-
Right, no, that makes total sense, sure.
And again, you, you have a wire to pay that.
And you don't have to pay it in full all at once. You can pay it over time if that makes it, you know, a little bit higher budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry that happened.
Sorry.
No, I understand.
All right, you can stay right there. And our next one is 341 Highland Street. Not coming? Okay. So that we just pass that over if she's not here?
No, there's no action.
Okay. And then our last one is 70 Church Street. I assume you're Mr., you're from Church Street?
Yes, 70 Church Street.
All right.
My son.
Hi. He can come sit at the table if he wants to, if he doesn't want to be back there.
Come on up, come on up.
He can come be on TV with the rest of us.
Right over here next to you. You sit right there.
Thank you.
Right there.
Thank you.
Yep.
You got your switch, what game are you playing?
You got your switch.
Good.
Okay. So I had a, I had a, I have a definite problem. My average water bill is about $200, $185, $200 a month, and it's been that way for the last seven or eight, eight readings. But then I got one on the third, 32823 for $300. So I didn't think of nothing, but I thought maybe the water rates went up or whatever. The next reading, I had it for 604. So what I did then is I went down, down the cell, I put up, I'm a plumber, by the way.
Oh, okay.
My father was the plumbing inspector in this town for 55 years.
Okay.
Freddie Canducci. And so anyways, I put a pressure test on the system. And I, you know, I, I shut the ballcock, in, in, incoming line in, off, and, and left the fixtures just the way they were, and it read, no movement of the dial, none, zero. Left it for an hour and a half, no movement of the dial. Turned it, took the, took the gauge off and re, you know, reopened up the ballcock, uh, the ball valve at the meter. And then when I came home from work that day, I did the same thing. And again, no, no movement of the dial, no leak, no nothing. This is after the 604 reading, 604 bill. So I figured, you know, I paid the bill, and I, you know, I think, I said, well, you know, some, I, what's going on, I don't know, maybe it's a glitch. Then my brother, who owns the house, calls me, and he says, Christopher, you have a $1,700 bill. And I said, Jerry, that's impossible, I don't have any leaks. So what I did is I, I disconnected the meter, and I blast, I, and I blasted, I turned the ball valve on, with it apart, on the street side, and blasted it out, just blasted the meter out, not water going through, just blasting it out, with all the fixtures stopped. Hooked it back up. And then the lady at the DPW said, well, as soon as you found out you had a $1,700 bill, it stopped. And I says, yeah, because I fixed it. And she, she goes, well, what do you mean, you fixed it? I said, I told her what I did. So they took the meter off, put a test on it, no leaks, no nothing, everything's fine. So from the $284 bill to the $604 bill to the $1,700 bill, I had a, I had a faulty meter. And there's no, no two ways around it. I put a, I put a pressure test on it, checked it twice, everything, nothing.
Okay. Did the water department come out and do any of that before? Did, you did those things, but did the water department come out?
They came out and took the meter out and put a test on it.
Okay, after, after you did what you did or before?
After, after I did what I did. And it's, it, the, the leak had stopped about a week and a half, two weeks before they came out, because I said, I need someone to, you know, do something here, check the meter, something. And that was it. That, that's the story.
Okay.
You know, I've had, I had a faulty meter, but when they came, I had already done it. I had already, whatever debris, whatever, whatever, who knows? I don't even know how those meters work. I don't know how they read, I don't know nothing. But like I said, I, I blasted it out, and then it stopped. My father said, you got a problem with the meter, make sure you clean it out.
Okay.
So-
Let's find out how the meter works.
Jason.
The meter is a positive displacement. So when water goes through it, it, it actually, it flows through it. So if something's stuck in there, it, it won't register. Something's stuck in the meter, it won't register. And you can't, I don't know, I don't know what you did if you took the meter off. I'm not sure what you did.
I didn't take the meter off on the, on the house side. I took it off on the street side.
Okay.
And I turned the ball valve on and squirted water in there.
Okay.
All right? And then I put it back together again, and then the problem stopped, stopped.
So the other thing is when we take that meter out and we put a test on it.
Yeah.
We send that meter out to a independent contractor that tests the meter. So he'll run a quarter gallon, half gallon, and one gallon flow, or quarter, one gallon, and 10 gallon flow through that meter, and that's where they come up with your reading. And they take both of those test results, and they average those out.
Yeah.
And that's how they, the meter came back, and it tested fine for flow going through that meter.
Right.
So that, that's what the test was.
Yeah, well, I mean, the test was after I did what I did. And, and the problem stopped. The lady says, you, you don't have any, what, what is she, what's that called, continuous? No.
A continuous leak.
Huh?
A continuous leak.
No, she said, you don't, well, yeah. She said, you don't have a continuous leak. And I never had a leak. I, like I said, I'm a plumber, I, I know my house. Isn't, there wasn't-
But it does look, I mean, it looks consistent, but it does look like the consumption went up quite a bit.
Yeah, tons, it went up.
It did, most likely it was a, I, I would say it was a leaky toilet. Because a lot of people don't-
A leaky toilet, I, I didn't have a leaky toilet. I, I mean, how can you say that a leaky toilet?
Yeah, mostly we had a leaky-
I didn't, I didn't fix the toilet. It's the original ballcocks that came with the, with the, when I redid the house three years ago, four years ago. The original ballcocks.
And what meter's on the house now, the same one or did you?
No, a new one.
You requested a new one?
Requested a new one.
All right.
So it's a new meter on the house, how about the one in the street?
Uh, there's no, there's not a meter in the street. There's only a, a service line that runs into the house, when it gets into the house, and there's a meter.
That was checked.
Yeah.
I don't know either.
I'm not, I'm not technical enough to know why, what would have happened.
He was saying it was the meter, we took the meter out, we had the meter tested. The meter came back and it tested fine. Operational meter. And we have a continuous report here. That's all that we can do.
Right.
And we can provide.
What do you think?
But that was, they tested the meter after I did what I did.
Right. I wish that, I wish that you hadn't done that, I wish they'd come out and tested it.
I had a $1,700 bill.
Right.
A $1,700 bill, I couldn't, I had to do something.
I, I mean, I, if I had a $1,700 bill, I'd call the DPW before I touched anything. But me, but I'm not a plumber, so I, you know.
Well, the DPW very nicely contacted the owner of the house, my brother, saying, look at, you got a, you got a problem, you got $1,700 bill. So when I got that news, I did, like my father instructed me to do many, many, many years ago.
I, I expect the technology might be different now.
The meter's different.
Yeah.
They're same, same.
Yeah. And he says, flush it out. And that's what I did, I flushed it out.
Do we have any, any explanation we had?
The meter tested fine. The only way it moves is if water goes through it.
Right.
When, do you know when you flushed out, what date?
I couldn't hear you.
Do you know which date you flushed it out?
Uh, I, I, I don't know what date. It was, it was three weeks ago? Maybe three weeks ago?
So something like April 15th?
No.
Well, that would be about three weeks ago. April 15th is three weeks ago.
April 15th, yeah.
What I noticed was, and I'm ju, the one table we have, this one here, the last day here in March, something like the 19th, it drops down. Jason, do we have any more doubt beyond the 19th at this point?
I have it until March.
You looking at this one, Charlie, with that big spike?
Well, there's a big spike, yeah, but the-
March 27th is when it stopped.
All right, that's when I did it, March 27th.
Okay, so we're talking more like five or six weeks ago?
Yeah, yeah, that's when, that's when I got the call from my, my brother.
March 27th is stopped. It went from, it went from a continuous to an intermittent. Intermittent is if you use water, let's say, you're not using water to get up, to get a glass of water, that's an intermittent. And every hour, it looks at it to see what's happening. Within that hour, if you get a glass of water, if you flush the toilet, that's a, that's intermittent. A continuous, it's seeing water constantly go through it. That is a continuous.
So this would seem continuous to me, looking at this, then?
Until-
Well, yeah, this is a daily table that I'm looking at, Jason. And this is the one that shows around 200 gallons per day, every day. And then the last bar in the chart, it goes down to close to 100. I'm just wondering what, if we have any information about what the daily amount is now since then?
Oh, since the daily amount now, we'd have to go out and run a, run a report. Yeah, we'd have to run a report.
He's indicated he made, he, whatever he did happened on the 27th. What I'm noticing, I mean, it never gets down really below 150 until that date. I'm wondering, you know, I have no, I'm spitballing here, I'm trying to figure things out, I'm not- Yes. Because it, because only go, this one, this only goes up like the 19th.
Black and white, so it's harder to-
There's one more, you have one more in there?
Okay. Okay, yeah, right. Okay, so then, yeah, okay, so-
So now it's not, this is what, I mean, 200 gallons a day is not typical. Like, right? I mean, I don't know, what's the average amount of-
Average for-
No, he's right, I mean, according to this, he's running about 10 gallons a day.
This is what he's running now.
So what's, and that's, what's like usual, like what are most people? You don't know, everybody's different, right?
It really depends. Everybody is really different.
Depends how clean everybody is.
When I, when I.
Take a shower or you take a bath?
When I run my annual statistical report, it's right about 48 gallons per person per day.
Okay.
That's, that's what my data comes out with. And again, every household is different.
Yeah. The drop off, according to this, is on March 23rd. Right. So it's a few days before, the drop off, according to this table, is on March 23rd.
Okay.
It goes from around 200 gallons a day down to about 15 gallons a day.
Well, that's when, that's when I blasted it out. That's when, you know, I didn't, I don't remember the exact date. Because I don't know when I called the lady, and then she made the comment, "Well, you, you, like I was, you, you."
Well, I think, you know, what we have here is some information from the Water Department on the 22nd. It says, this is from the, um, from the Water Department log. Water consumption report reflected a continuous leak. The owner, the property owner was contacted. This is on the 22nd.
Okay.
You obviously, you know, and then.
And then he called, he called me, and that's when I did what I, that's when I revert, um, you know, blasted, blasted the meter out, cleaned the meter out.
Was there any other people in the house during this, the beginning of this?
In the beginning?
Yeah, was there any other people living in the house?
Just, just my girlfriend and my son. And he's at school all day, I'm at work all day, and she's, she's out and about doing her thing, doing her work. There, there's no water used hardly any, during the day, except the morning, of course.
Right.
You know, um.
I don't know, I'm at a loss with this one. Yeah. I think, can we do, can we put this on hold with his bill, like, no more? Are you getting, um, you must have a demand and interest and all of that?
I haven't got a, I, I haven't got a demand yet.
Okay.
I haven't been informed of a demand.
Okay.
But I'm sure there's going to be one coming, and it's going to be, there's going to be interest charge.
Right, so can we do what we did with the other one, but can we study this longer and just make sure that this continues with the lower amount?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and I, because I hear what you're saying.
Another consumption report, we can, we can.
For this to drop.
Right, because I hear what you're saying, but when I look at this, it looks like there was a leak, and now there's not. That, that's what the data seems to show.
With, with the meter that he blew out.
Excuse me?
I need a demonstration.
That he blew out, um.
I, I don't know how he blew it out.
We need to demo, we need to go to the scene.
I don't know how you blew it out.
I, I took apart the meter on the street side.
Yeah.
Okay, so now it's separated.
Mm-hmm.
Turned the ball, the ball valve on and squirted water in it.
Why didn't you just run the faucet?
Run the, because I, because that's.
Are you not getting any water, enough pressure on the other side or volume on the other side?
Then I hooked it back up again and opened up the house side and, and saw what was going on.
Oh, okay.
You know what I'm saying? So I blasted it out.
Yeah, I just, I didn't understand what, how that you did that.
Yeah. I just, you know, I.
Because if there was something in there, most likely you would lose pressure or volume.
No, I didn't.
From the inside of your house.
I didn't. That's the thing, I didn't. I was getting great volume. I, I, there was no indication of anything, no indication. If, for $1,700, I don't know how much water that is an hour, but it's a hell of a lot. A hell, a hell of a lot, gallons.
And it's showing that.
Yeah, I mean, it's showing seven or eight gallons.
And I had the same pressure that I do now. Exact same pressure. So there was no water going anywhere. It was a faulty meter. It was a faulty meter. It's a faulty reading. I don't know what it was, but it was.
I understand. I don't either. That's, that's the, that's the confusing part. And I don't want to see you stuck with a bill that you shouldn't have, but I also, like we said to the other man, you know, we can't just ignore something if there was a problem that isn't on the town's end of thing. And that's why I think we need more data on this, but I would like you to not.
I can send you, I don't know if we have the.
I would like, you know, not to have you incurring any interest charges or demands until we can figure out more about what's going on, because I.
You know, $785, $69, you could fill up 13 swimming pools.
It's a lot of water.
It's a lot of, I don't know how many wa, gallons it is, doesn't say, but.
Do you have any neighbors that have swimming pools?
I don't have a swimming pool. I don't have one.
Do your neighbors have a swimming pool?
Yeah, you know.
They would have been frozen, I'm looking.
That's March.
Well, and that's, that's what we would be doing. If something wrong, then we'd send the meter out.
Happening in December, the seven or eight gallons.
Which it was.
And again, with what he says he did as far as blowing out this meter, could there have been a problem before he did what he did?
No.
Okay.
Like, there couldn't be like something stuck in there that made it look like water was, like you said, it, it counts as water flows across. Oh, yeah, I need a, I need a.
Yeah, pressure and volume. Something in there would have been in there, and it wouldn't register. The meter will not register. The meter's stuck, it will not register.
Okay.
But that's why.
All right. So we're going to continue this?
It operates on a spin?
Yes.
And that's how it reads?
A positive displacement.
Right, in other words, it's going to be pushed.
As, as water goes through, it's a positive displacement disc on the inside.
Yeah.
That water has to push that around through.
Right, right. Is there any way that could keep running, keep going, keep going, keep going?
I can, I can check it at the shop right now. I have it. If it's moved, I will tell you.
Would it move if it wasn't attached to something?
There's no water going through it.
There's no.
Right.
There's no pressure again, you know, on both sides.
Right, right. It only moves when water goes through it.
Okay.